The zoning board of adjustment meeting for September the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four is now in session. Will everyone please rise for salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty one, P L nineteen seventy five by advertising in the home news Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, and also posting on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Mrs. Gottstein here. Mr. Castle Grant.
Here.
First case that we're going to hear tonight will be thirty-four Patent Drive. Sir, would you please come forward? This is case twenty-four ten. Sir, would you please tell us what you want to do with the property that you have?
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right, you're sworn.
Would you tell the board?
Give us your name and address, please.
Walkman Yellow, fifty Pine Tree Drive, Paulville, New Jersey.
Would you tell the board what you want to do with the property on Patent Drive?
I wanted to keep the driveway the same as everybody else has it, which is on the the property lines and keep it up. And basically, that's about all I needed to have done.
I understand that you live on Pine Tree Drive. Am I correct?
Correct.
And is it my understanding that you bought the property? It was a vacant lot on Patent Drive? And with that vacant lot that you have there, you're putting a house there right now, is I correct? And the driveway that you want to put there would be the same as the entire development of Patent Drive, am I correct?
And the curb, if you looked at it, the curb is already from the existing driveway on property line straight up from the old house that was there.
And that lot is fifty by one hundred and sixty, am I correct?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
What's the variance, just for the record?
It's the side yard setback for the driveway. It's proposed to be one foot off of the side lot line, where five feet is required.
There any? This is more to our technical people. Is there any problems with the curb cut going over the property line or the apron, interfering with the neighboring property?
Mr. Chairman, as was indicated earlier, it's common in developments where you have fifty-foot wide lots where your driveways don't have that five-foot offset. In this case, I believe there's an existing driveway, existing curb cut that you're going to utilize. Yeah, so it was there with the previous house. He just wants to connect it in with his new house and keep the same curb cut. Any encroachment that there might be would be in the right of way, not on private property.
Any other questions from the board in reference to this application? No further questions. I want to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in reference to this application? Hearing no one, I close the public portion. What's the pleasure of the board concerning this application?
I have one question. When are you building the house?
The house is already being built right now. Any prefer details or? I mean, no, it's already being built.
And you don't need any other variances?
No.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the application be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Okay, your application has been approved. We'll memorialize it next month and you can proceed with the rest of the building of the of the house and the driveway.
Right, will I get a like a approval note?
You'll get a resolution detailing your approval.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll tell you how it works.
The next application is twenty-four thirteen fifty-one in Broadridge Street. Good evening. Would you give us your name and your address, please?
Ian Ebichhausen, fifty-one Embroidery Street, Sarin.
Let's have you sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, you're sworn.
Would you tell the board exactly what you want to do with this swimming pool on your property?
Okay, we would like to put it in a sixteen by thirty-two foot pool on the side yard, not the backyard. We don't have enough space. The variances are, we will be five, the pool will be five feet from our neighbor, nine feet from our house opposed to the ten feet. The other variance is is the side yard opposed to the back. And then the rocks will be two feet from the fence opposed to the five feet required.
What was that last part?
The rocks, the drainage rocks, will have two feet around the property opposed to the five feet, I believe, is the variance.
Is it my understanding that you have to have the pool on the side of the house, excuse me, and not in the back because there's not enough room for that type of a pool there, correct?
Correct.
So it's the only place where you could put that?
Yes.
Would have any questions in reference to this application?
Is this above the ground or below the ground?
Below.
Well, okay.
Any other questions?
Just the variance he stated are the correct variances?
Yeah, I can run through them for the record, but the testimony from the applicant, I believe, was accurate. There's a side yard setback to the pool itself, five feet proposed where ten feet is required. The setback to the pool surround is two feet proposed where five feet is required. The setback between the principal structure and the pool, nine feet is proposed where ten feet is required. The pool is located in the side yard where it's required to be in the rear yard. And then the pool surround setback to the rear yard is two feet proposed where five feet is required.
All right, the last one with the setback or whatever, is that more a structural problem rather than a planning use problem?
Well, it's, so you've got the pool itself, and then you've got a few feet of the surrounding masonry around the pool. You know, as far as, I don't know from a structural issue, but from a setback perspective, it's very close to the neighboring property.
All right, thank you.
On that one side, it's close to the neighbor's property but not the house, am I correct?
The neighbor's house is still a good distance away from the property line.
Where you're going to have it, it's the driveway of the other house is there, correct?
Yes, probably about another ten feet or so away from driveway, if not more.
Okay.
I ask a quick question. Do you have the location of the pool equipment, the pump heater, whatever else you may have? Do you have that location identified?
I do. The pool heater will probably be, I want to say, six and a half or seven and a half, I can't read this right now, but six and a half or seven and a half feet away from the pool, which I believe the requirement is five.
But which direction? Is it going to be toward the back of your house?
Well, that would be the closest. We might actually, I don't know, I know a couple of people have stopped by. We might actually extend the fence a little bit more, but if I can fit it there, it's going to be there. If not, it'll be much further towards the towards the street and the other property, the neighbor's property.
Okay. One other question. I don't see a fence usually for a pool. You need a fence. It might not require variance, but are you, you're going to get a fence?
So the closest fence right, right next to the pool will be vinyl. We'll get a new fence there. And then, I don't know if you could see, I have another fence. I have a patio towards the other side of the property, and there's a fence there, so we're going to replace that as well. What is that? Iron fence? Black iron? The black iron fence, yeah.
And then what about in the front?
That's going to be a new vinyl fence.
Okay, from the house to the side yard fence. Okay, all right.
You also have a shed in the backyard on that one corner. Is that going to be taken down?
We're going to remove that and put that on the other side of the property.
Okay, so it'll just be the pool on that one side?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing no other questions, I'm going to open this application up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in reference to this application? Hearing none, I close the public portion. Pleasure to the board concerning this application.
Make a motion to accept this application?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Castle Grant.
Yes.
Gottstein. Yes. Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Okay, your application's been approved. Good luck with your pool.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
The next application is case sixteen twelve Clyde Auto Recycling.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Peter Klausler. I'm an attorney with the firm Heilbronn Payton on behalf of Clyde Auto Recycling. Last, we were last here in June requesting an extension of a use variance that was previously granted by this board. Board granted that extension for three months, asking that I come back and report as to the status of the matter. When we were here, we had a couple of open issues, and I'd like to talk about those open issues and tell the board where we are at. We had one open issue with the NJDEP where we were looking to the DEP for a withdrawal letter from a transition area waiver application. We received that withdrawal letter, and we delivered, we received it on the eighteenth of July, and we delivered it to the board on the nineteenth of July. There was a county letter that was issued for the application in two thousand and seventeen that had three open items. One of them was the delivery of revised plans to address certain details that the county engineer wanted. Those were delivered to the county on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. The second item in the county letter that needed to be addressed was the the preparation of a bond performance guarantee for certain improvements. That bond was secured by my client. Unfortunately, it was secured in the name of Sireville, the city. So we've already reached out to the insurance company, and they're reissuing the bond in the name of the county. That's been paid for, and it's ready to go, which is waiting for the insurance company to give us the paperwork. And then finally, from the county letter, there was a requirement that a contribution be made for the ADA ramps, those orange ramps that you see on the corners. So we have a county letter from August of two thousand and nineteen, which tells us what the contribution is. So when we deliver the bond, we deliver the check for the contribution, and we deliver the check for the ten percent of the bond. Myself and the applicant's engineer both reached out to the county and said, we have dated letters. Can we rely on them? We were told by the county that we can, that those are the correct numbers. So the bond is based off of that, and then obviously, the contribution will be based off of that. One of the items in Mr. Cornell's letter was a fire flow test for the fire hydrant. That was completed and approved by Kevin Krasinski of your fire bureau. He issued an email on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, that that's been approved, so that's been satisfied. So we're, so all of the open issues have been addressed. My client didn't apply, didn't purchase the building and didn't send the bond to the county or the checks to the county because we want to make sure that the board has grants this a further extension to allow that to occur. But we did all of the things that we needed to do. We're ready to go and apply for a building permit. I asked my client to call, oh, I'm sorry. Last time we were here, a question was brought up with regard to the old quote for the actual construction. An updated quote was received. It's acceptable to the applicant. I asked my client to reach out to the company that's supplying the building and doing the construction to give us a timeframe. They told us from the point that we applied for a building permit and ordered the actual building from them, make the deposit, that they said the building would be erected within eight weeks. So you know, obviously, weather, you know, there could be delays, but that'll be under Mr. Andy Moschinski's, you know, guidance as he's watching us through the process, and I believe that once we begin construction, to a certain extent, the approval that was granted by the board that I'm requesting for a further extension would be vested at that point. We would have satisfied the conditions of of the use variance approval, and we would be, we wouldn't have to come back to this board anymore as the construction was ongoing, and that would be under your building department's purview. They would be making sure we're doing everything we're supposed to do. So considering sort of the eight-week timeframe that they're telling us it would be built, and the fact that we have about a week or so probably of dealing with going to the county and delivering money and bonds, I would ask if the board would consider just extending the previous extension for another three months, and hopefully, I won't even be back here. We'll be under construction, and we'll be vested, and we'll be ready to go. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other thing. There's a, the temporary office trailer that's on the building will be removed as the permit for the building, the building permit is applied for. And then a temporary construction trailer would be located on the property outside of the footpath or in the building, but that would be, Mr. Moschinski asked that I bring that to the board's attention, but that would be, I think that's also part of the normal building permit process.
Mr. Cornell, am I correct in this that the Department of Environmental Protection, that is satisfied?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. There were two issues with the DEP. One was getting an updated letter of interpretation, which they did provide to us. It means that the state confirmed the wetlands boundaries on the property. The second question we had raised back when the original approval was granted is, do they need permits to have trailers within their wetland area? And if you recall, there was a wetlands expert that was retained by the applicant. At the last meeting, he said the state agreed a permit was not required. They submitted a request to withdraw the application, and that was accepted by the state. So the wetland issue that previously we had concerns with has been resolved.
That's satisfied.
That's correct, yes.
And the Borough of Sarin issue is satisfied?
Correct. We had requested fire flow based upon the proposed building construction. They had the appropriate tests done, and Kevin Krasinski, your fire marshal, reviewed it and signed off, indicating everything was acceptable. So that's been resolved as well. As indicated, the only open item is the final sign-off from the county. Typically, for resolution compliance, we ask for a letter from the county saying all their conditions have been addressed, and they have no objections to issuing building permits. From speaking with the applicant's attorney, it sounds like all the paperwork is in order. They're just waiting for the county to go through and issue that letter. Then they'll provide the bonds and everything else. So it seems to be very close. A three-month timeframe would seem to be appropriate to allow them to complete whatever's remaining and then get the necessary building permits.
Okay, that's really what I wanted to know, whether the three months would probably be appropriate for the county to finish the paperwork.
I did speak with the county president chairman based upon the applicant's attorneys. They've spoken with the county, and it sounds like it's very close to being resolved.
We have, thanks for bringing up the LOI. I forgot that. I'm proud of that. We just got the LOI, maybe about a week or so ago, and submitted it to the to the town, to the city, the borough. I'll get it right eventually. But yeah, the county, Mr. Cornell's correct. The county's not going to issue that letter that says we have no objection to the building permit until they have their bond and their contribution. So we'll submit that immediately if the board is comfortable granting that extension. And within that timeframe, I would imagine the county's going to issue the letter within three months. I mean, that would be. And if I have problems, I'll reach out to Joan and let her know that the county's holding me up or something like that, but I I don't envision that. And the lady, when I spoke to the woman at the county, she has the file, she has it out, we're now digital with them, and they seem pretty organized. So I don't think it's going to be an issue. The county seems to be getting back.
Now, after you get the final approval from the county, then you're going to start the
Immediately.
The work?
Yep.
Do you have any idea or an estimate on how long it will take you to get the work completed?
We were advised by the contractor that from the moment we say go, he would have the building up in eight weeks, would be built and constructed in eight weeks.
Mr. Chairman, keep in mind, on top of the building construction, we've got some site improvement, paving, driveways.
Yeah.
So in addition, you just put the building up, there is site work that hasn't been completed.
So that'll take a longer period of time?
The site preparation work, I don't have an estimate on how long that would take, but as I said earlier, I think once we get to that point and we have a building permit issued and we're working on the site, we have satisfied the variance conditions that were granted, and we've now begun, you know, our construction. It would then be up to your building department to, you know, make sure that we're continuing to do the things we're supposed to be doing. But by then, I believe it would be out of this board's jurisdiction, in a good way.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, what will happen is procedurally, once we receive that letter from the county, they'll advise the construction office that they've addressed all the conditions of the resolution. So this board is basically done at that point, and everything's transferred over to the construction.
Would have any questions?
I don't know if it makes sense to give them a little more time.
Yeah, four months?
Four months, just so they don't have to come back in some five weeks.
Yeah. Before we do that.
I want to open this open, I want to open this to the public. Anyone from the public want to speak in regards to this application of Clyde's Auto Recycling? Hearing none, I close the public portion. Any other questions from the board in reference to this application?
And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, rather than three months, I think maybe four months or slightly longer might be more appropriate because our December meeting is early in December, and I hate for them to have to come back just because maybe they're they're off by a week or two, you know. Seems like they're getting everything in order, and they want to do this project. At least that's my opinion.
Has the county given you any kind of timeframe from when you give them these documents that they'll issue the letter?
That's one question I didn't ask her, but I mean, just based on my experience in dealing with the county, I if it's not within three months, I get to come in and like I said, I would reach out to the board and say the county is dragging their feet. As long as we've done everything we're supposed to do, I would think that that would be acceptable to this board if you saw that we did everything, and it's simply the county dragging their feet. But I hope we're coming out of a little bit of a dark hole with the county. It seems like Julio Moro and a lot of the guys are, they're really they're really moving. So I'm pretty confident we'll be able to.
Mr. Chairman, the hard part is getting the county approval. They've got the county approval. Now it's really just satisfying the conditions, which are the bonds and some paperwork items. So that should be straightforward.
Any other questions to the board? I'm going to make a motion that we give the extension for four months. I have a motion and a second for an extension on this application for four months. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant.
Yes.
Gottstein. Yes. Mr. Esposito.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. So if they're done, so four months would be January meeting. So if they're done before that, they don't have to come back?
If they have a shovel in the ground, they're done with this board.
Okay, so they don't have to come back. But if they don't, then are we saying they have to come back and give us a report like they did last time? Is that what this means?
Yeah, I mean,
Yeah, I'll report in the interim. If I'm having a problem with something, I will immediately reach out to the board and tell you.
Joan, before we close this, can you give me the January's date of that, of our next meeting, January two thousand and twenty-five?
Oh, it was I think the twenty-sixth. Not sure. I'm giving you all that next month.
Well, yeah, it looks like twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
What was it?
Yeah.
Twenty-second?
Is that what it is, the twenty-second?
All right, so it'll be January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. That'll be the four months.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the board helping us keep this alive. Much appreciated.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, the next application is case twenty-four oh four C and W Infinity LLC, nine eighty U.S. Highway nine. Mr. Page.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Michael Page. As you're aware, I'm the attorney for the applicant C and W Infinity LLC. As you may recall, this application was initially presented to the board on June twenty-sixth and was by request continued and carried towards to allow the applicant to further research, address, and provide additional information to the board with regard to the concerns raised by the board members at the June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. As you may further recall, one of the concerns was the applicability of the Fair Housing Act and the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination as to Mr. Toa's testimony that he would be occupying one of the two proposed apartments, and that he would not rent the other unit to anyone with children under the age of eighteen years. Well, as researched and discussed with the board's attorney, Mr. Fisher, the property as proposed to be used by my client would be exempt from the provisions of these laws. But unfortunately, as my client cannot control the use of the property, should it be transferred to a future owner, which brings us to the second concern of the board is concern requiring regarding the potential proposed use of the property by families with small children. And to this end, I'd like to call Ms. Chris Toa, who is the spouse of Mr. Wayne Toa, who previously testified, and she is also fifty percent owner of the applicant C and W Infinity LLC. As Ms. Toa was not able to be able to attend the meeting and would like to address the board. I also presented to the board eleven sets, and there's six photos in each set that Ms. Toa had provided, which depicts other residential properties and commercial properties located similarly along Route nine. I've also presented eight, which has been marked A three, which represents hand markings on the original drawing submitted to the board, which further represents additional fencing or enclosures that my client is willing to do, which would actually eliminate the the traffic flow around the building and create more space in the backyard area for any potential tenants in this regard. You'll see from the document marks A two, the first picture, which shows a section of Route nine and houses and other properties located along it. The second photograph shows number nine twenty-six Route nine, which is a residence that's located right along Route nine. The third photo shows Crestview Apartment Complex, where the apartment buildings also are located in close proximity to Route nine. The fourth shows The fourth shows nine eighty, the address of nine eighty-five Route nine, which is a business with an apartment located above and behind the storefront, uh which is located on Route nine, and which is similar to uh the applicant's property here. And the next picture, uh photo number five, shows the Dairy Queen business, which is located right next to my client's property, uh which shows seating um very close to uh Route nine um with no no protection around it. And the last picture shows the storefront of my client's property, uh which shows the front entrance way, which is the entrance way to the apartments from the front of the building. Um and that's where, you know, any potential, you know, the issue came up with if there were small children, where they may be picked up by a bus or school, uh simply they would be waiting right on the sidewalk, protected by the railing um above the parking area um for the bus to come in, pick them up. And same when the bus would drop them off, could be right there. Um both apartments have access to that front door by way of a hallway located within the building. So nobody would have to walk along the side of the parking area or the loading area there. Um and again, with the with the proposed additional enclosures, um the whole backyard area, uh people could go out the back door and would never see the parking lot. So to that end, uh I would like to call uh Ms. Toa, who would like to um make a statement to the board to address um the concerns, some of the concerns that the board had at the last meeting.
One second. So you're saying the tenants would go in this front door of the business?
Yeah, the front door that's depicted.
The double doors.
The double doors. I I believe that's the doors that go into the hallway of the building. And then there's a hallway that goes the length of the buildings and then there's another entrance at the back too. Those are the entrances for the apartments.
Sean, this tone? Yeah. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, so help you God. All right, here's more.
Um, my name is Chris Toa and the address is nine eighty U S Highway nine south. I would like to make a statement regarding board of members' concerns. Due to current economics unconcerning after COVID nineteen, many business have chosen to work from home. Our office have been weakened.
One second. Do you have a microphone we can give her?
Hi, thank you.
You use the microphone, we can hear you better if you use that.
Okay, maybe I have an essence.
It's okay.
Um, due to current economics suddenly after COVID nineteen, many business have chosen to work from home. Our office has been weakened for almost two years. We need to survive. Liquor store are very competitive industries. A year ago, we submit an informal applications to convey our office into two residences apartment. After the meeting, I was very happy because I received an informations from the board members that we have good chance to pass the project as long as we meet all the requirement. Over the year, we have several township meeting meetings with several professionals from both party compete and approve for plans. Since last meeting, I understand the concerns of board members. However, there are many houses and apartments named Wood Nine instead of you. The south side are such as nine eighty-two, uh sorry, eight thirty to eight ninety-six and nine twenty-six. On the north side, from eight oh five to nine thirty-three and nine eighty-five. There are all total is forty-three houses. Has six buildings in the Crestview complex. Two buildings in front are just off the highway. I wonder are the peoples living in these houses and apartments along the highway safe? Dairy Queen is next to us. They provide outdoor picnic tables for customers. Some of the seats just next to the highway. Kids wait and run around in the parking lot without fence. May I know if this is safe? I said yes, because things have been going great for years. I'm a mother of two kids and I love my children. I believe all parents feel the same way. Just like when customers bring their childrens to the store. They will watch them. They will watch their childrens in enter the store safely. I believe tenants will do the same. As for school bus, there are two entrance to the second floor. A walkway with hand wheels at the front door. Bus can pull up to the front door to pick up childrens. It is off pit for Route nine south when going to an after class. Everyone, I believe everyone life is extremely important. I want to see my tenant live safe and happy. We will also be adding a fence to the bed gardens for them to enjoy. And I would love all board members support our plan. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions? Any questions of what?
For the pu- those apartments, do you have to walk through the liquor store or?
No.
No.
They have a separate two door, one in the front side with the hand wheels and the other one on the side. Um, side like uh facing the nine north. So we have two doors going to second floor. They don't need to go through in the liquor store.
One one thing I I do uh take exception to when you spoke. You you mentioned the Dairy Queen and and people, you know, kids coming to the Dairy Queen, purchasing ice cream and sitting outside. There there is a difference between them coming there in a car and getting ice cream and staying half an hour or so as opposed to living in 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 apartment next door. You know, they're there all the time as opposed to a transit coming to your Dairy Queen and just staying for fifteen or twenty minutes. And in that particular case, uh a small child there is usually with his parents and they're out there with them too. We can't guarantee that that would be the same situation in in a residence that you would have there by the liquor store. So there is a difference.
I understand is a little bit different, but you know, when the kids they go into the buildings, if they want to go to the backyard, they don't need to come out to the front. You know, because the fence already blocking them, they can't go to the street. Be when when the kids go into a buildings, they have a the the door on the on the like on the on the ground, like, you know, for the walk-in, they have a doors there, so when they go in, the door already locked.
But there is a difference between a person going to a Dairy Queen for a half an hour or so as opposed to living in an apartment twenty-four seven. That that's my point. That that's the difference that I see.
I I understand. I understand what you talk about. Uh, I don't think, you know, the parents, they will let the kids leave from the apartments, right? Even though when they leave, when they leave, like, you know, all those house by the highway, I don't think like the parents let them out outside of the on the house too, right? Do you think like if your house by the highway, do you think you will leave your kids outside in the backyard if your house by the highway?
It's very possible they would. If if they're, you read about it all the time, all across the country. That parents are not responsible.
So so far, for many years, like from that wood nine, I didn't hear anything happened. So which means like the the parents, they love their kids, they won't let them out by the backyard because like they know their house is by the highway.
Well.
Then the other hand is like, you know, we we don't want like the kids they live in the buildings. We we not trying like to get in like, you know, the the families without any young kids in the buildings because like one side, we will take it for our own. And then the other side, we we are looking for, you know, like adults, you know, couples or elderly or like, you know, like maybe like fifty plus, you know, something like that. We don't, we don't think they, you know, we're going to rent it to the kids. And then the other hand is like, you know, as Asians, I'm an Asian, you know, when Asian own the property, right? Most likely, we're not going to sell it. Like, I can't say any other peoples like for us, like, you know. I I don't know how to explain because like my English isn't that good. Sorry about it.
I think your English is very good.
Well, I'm saying for myself.
I I guess you're responsible, I'm responsible, but there are a lot of people who are not responsible. And that's a concern that I have with this type of a situation here. Uh, I read about it all the time, you know. Parents aren't responsible, kids drown in swimming pools. Parents are away, they leave the kids with a babysitter who's not responsible. And that's the concern we have. And the the law, we have a federal law that says you can't discriminate against children and we're a government agency here and we have to respect that and and abide by it.
So the, just to clarify, um the law, as long as uh the property's owner occupied, they can restrict the age uh of renters or and restrict children under eighteen. Um, fortunately, there is a case that provides that a board cannot mandate that a property at the condition always be owner occupied. Um, so that's that's where you would reach kind of the deflection point. Um, that's, you know, whenever some point far in the future, they decide to no longer occupy it. Uh, that's that's when any restriction against uh children.
But if they decide to use a Realtor to rent out the properties, then the federal housing law does become effective and they couldn't discriminate against children.
I believe that the air concession for uh units owner occupied buildings.
Owner occupied, but if they use a Realtor, we can't discriminate. Exactly. But what if they have a problem renting it and then they do reach out to a real estate agent?
Be a condition.
Right? Because that's not going to be an easy place to rent.
I think like, you know.
I I if I may, just to address that, I I don't believe that there's any exception to having a Realtor represent you on the transaction. The property is exempt by being a two-family residence, being owner occupied. I think if you look at the statute, um I and I've discussed this with
I can't.
The attorney for the board, um the property itself is exempt from those, the application of those laws. So regardless of whether you use a Realtor or anybody else to rent it, that doesn't take away the exemption that's provided on the board. But regardless, they they still have this, especially in this day and age, many options, probably to advertise in apartments. And um, you know, if the board were to do that favorably on it, they could be in the usual condition of approval, but could condition on not using a Realtor to rent out uh apartment.
Because it's a protected class. You cannot discriminate discriminate against children. It's fair housing.
Nobody can, right, but.
Well, as a private owner, they can discriminate against children, but if I'm.
They they they're that that exempts if when it's owner occupied.
Right.
Okay, that exempts the property from that. So whether they employ a Realtor or not.
Don't keep saying that because if they employ a Realtor.
It's still owner occupied property.
It's owner occupied, but it it violates fair housing.
But but doesn't.
It does.
With the property owner is telling them to do, so.
You can't.
I I yeah, I mean, I don't think. I guess it's kind of a moot point anyway, because if the board were inclined to put that restriction on it, my client certainly would agree to that. My client has no intention on on doing that.
Mr. Page, if if you get a circumstance where your client owns the liquor store and they sell the liquor store, then it's open season on on the two apartments upstairs and possibly two apartments downstairs for rent, correct?
Well, no apartments downstairs.
Well, I mean, if if the if some.
Yes, the two apartments would be for whoever the new owner was.
Yes.
And out to wherever they want to.
Yes.
That would be the new owner. Um, obviously, you've heard from my clients, they're not hoping to do that. But I know one of the concerns with the board was um if the board were to put that restriction on or even if my client were to say, I won't rent it out to people under the age of eighteen or people with children under the age of eighteen, would that violate the discriminatory laws? And it won't from my client's perspective. So yes, if you sell, if he sells it to somebody or a new buyer comes along or a property gets transferred, that owner can rent it out to whomever they want, somebody with a family with small children.
Yes.
Right, right.
And and.
Variance goes with the land.
And the variance goes with the land. And and the other thing is before you had the apartments upstairs were not apartments, they were going to be rented for office space. And the economy didn't turn out that way. So what's to say in the future that if the liquor store doesn't doesn't work out and they decide to sell it and then we have a problem because now the new owner could turn around and do whatever he wants with it?
If you rent it to whomever he wants.
Yes.
Still would be a liquor store and apartments, they would have to come before the board to create any more apartments if they're trying to do that. But Mr. Page, is your client considered a duration or a variance that would only run with the land as long as it's owner occupied? In other words.
My clients?
Yeah, I mean, bringing up the thought now.
Right.
In other words, that if it's no longer owner occupied, then variance ceases to exist. Um, so it's it's a a time limited variance. That's something that the David Ford would consider, your client would consider because if that were to be the case, then the board could be uh insured that the uh prohibition against renting uh renters under eighteen, for example, or having any children under eighteen could remain in effect for as long as this would be an apartment. And any any use variance would uh no longer be valid uh after it's no longer owner occupied. I think I think that is reasonable. It it is not. I think, I think that is reasonable. It, it is not a uh, with the recent case law, I think that's fundamentally different than simply saying at the condition of approval, you can, it must always be owner occupied. I think, I, I believe, in my, in my view, durational variances are appropriate. I've, uh, seen them many times before. My boards, uh, clients of mine, when I appeared before boards. So, you know, that could really solve all your concerns, Mr. Chairman. Because at that point, they would no longer, they would never have the ability to have children uh in these apartments.
So what we're saying here is the approval would only be with, uh, the restriction of as long as they own it, there, there, there's no children under the age of eighteen there, correct?
As long as they're occupying it. And so what you do is you have them report something in the chain of title. Uh, which basically says that, talks about, you know, give a little reference, the resolution. And, uh, it'll basically say that this, uh, approval, if the board is so inclined to give one, uh, is only valid for so long as it's owner occupied. Which means that any buyer doing even the modicum of due diligence would know that they cannot buy it as an apartment unless they can show that they're occupied.
But that owner occupy would only be with the applicant that we have before us now. It wouldn't, it wouldn't go to another applicant, wouldn't cross over, would it?
It could as long as, uh, it is owner, as long as they intend to owner occupy it. They comply with the no, um, children under the age of eighteen, uh, then it could continue. Basically, what matters is the variance would go away as, when it no longer becomes owner occupied. So if it's them, uh, applicant owner occupying it, or someone they sell it to occupying it as long as it's owner occupied, under the Fair Housing Act and law against discrimination, they have the right to exclude children under the age of.
The only, the only issue I would have with that is if that was in effect and they were to sell it, the new owner could appeal our restriction to it and take us to court on it and, and get it, and get it changed.
I, I don't believe that, uh, they would be successful. Because you're talking about a limited duration variance and not a condition that affects the property perpetuity running. I mean, you could even have something in there that, you know, on sale of the property, they have to report it to zoning officer. Repeat that again? On sale of property, they have to report their sale to the zoning officer.
Okay, so ten years from now, I'll try and remember.
Well, it would be in the file and it would be in their chain of title.
It would be where?
I hope you keep it in the file. Right, the resolution would be in the file.
Just, Mr. Chairman, one, one question be, be. I remember from previous testimony that the one apartment to the back was going to be for their son. I didn't hear testimony that it was for the couple and their son. So can you clarify that? I don't know if I'm recalling incorrectly, but it sounded like it was for their son. Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and your son was twenty-four, am I correct? Twenty-three, okay. And, and you, you have possession, you would have possession of the, the larger apartment, am I correct? Okay, so it's you and your wife and your son. That's it. So we're talking one apartment, the other apartment is the one that you're going to rent. What's the board's opinion on this?
I just want to clarify something that the entrance to the liquor store is on one side of the building and the entrance to the apartments would be on the other side. Is that correct?
Why don't you, why don't you come up?
Three door in the front side and one door, one door on the side.
So the total building has a three front door.
And the left side and the middle door is go to the liquor store. And the right side, uh, that is going to the upstairs, the, uh, the first apartment in front.
Yeah. Me, that, the reason I'm confused is because I see those stripes for the parking spaces when I look at that picture.
Oh, that's a side door. Where's the, and the?
Yeah, I mean, I see.
So on this drawing here.
Oh, yeah, uh. That is a side door and the side parking space. So we have a two different engine. So that is going to the back apartment. So that we, we want to use it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have a photo.
Yeah, definitely.
Shows the front of the building, shows three separate sets of doors.
Yeah, and the left two door is go to the liquor store.
Right, so, correct. So two doors, as you're looking at this to the left, go directly to the liquor store. The doors to the right, which are in the photo you provided, lead to the apartment.
Yeah, they only go to the second floor.
Right, so I can pass this down so the board can see what it looks like.
Yeah.
The reason I was asking is, another thing is, so you're going to have the fence. You're going to put the fence just to, to clearly indicate that this is the apartment and this is, uh, so is there a way you can extend the fence and perhaps even put a gate just so that there's?
The fence to block it and then no one can go to the, uh, backyard. We.
Right, or just like on, on, on some normal houses, you know, they have a gate with a fence in the front, so people just don't wander in. You know, they have to actually go and open the gate. So that's kind of a deterrent. So if you could do something like that so that you know, a customer doesn't wander into that door, either on purpose or by accident, that there's, there's a gate there that they, it's sort of like a warning, like you're not supposed to be coming here.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand. So you mean you want to, um, use the fence to block it to en, uh, the engine, don't let the customer go to?
Yeah, with the gate, with the gate, just so.
That may be, uh, yeah, we can.
I mean, and that's kind of like a normal for a house in a lot of cases, you know, in the front yard.
Okay.
Mr. Page, before we go any further, uh, the suggestion that Mr. Fisher made, is your client and you agreeable to this type of arrangement? We didn't talk about that yet.
Yeah, no, um, I just asked my client and he understood what the, uh, board's attorney had indicated. Um, he's willing to, he's willing to accept that, um, as a condition or a, a limited um, approval on the, with regard to the application. So it is something that certainly would be acceptable to my client because as he even testified, it's his intention to, to live there with his family. He owns the business. He's owned that for a, a number of years now, um, and he wants to continue, um, there.
So, so the understanding would be that if he was to sell the property, it would be indeed that it's null and void on, on the, uh, the agreement with the board, with the children, correct?
It would still be a condition that would carry with the property.
Yes. So the, the, if, if they were to sell it, the new owner would know.
The new owner would have owner occupied in order to have the approval of the variance.
We, we would work together to find, uh, appropriately legal language that would be a a, a glaring flag on, uh, to show any potential buyer that is, uh, during any residential uses of limited duration should not expect necessarily to be able to continue that if they got property.
Also to find owner occupied. I mean, I could buy it and rent it out to my sister who has kids. I'm the owner. I mean, is there any dotted line to that or is it just cut and dry? You have to live there.
There, there can't be any kids. If you're the owner, you can't have kids either. That's a condition, no one under eighteen.
Oh, no, oh, the owner as well.
Every, all.
I missed that part.
That's the owner too.
Owner too.
You understand, we're doing this to protect the board because we have to do our job.
We, we understand, we understand.
The, the entire situation that we were talking about is, is children and safety, et cetera. And, and if, if we have this type of agreement, that satisfies you and it satisfies us, so. Would have any questions? Any opinions on this before we go any further? All right, before we go any further, I'm going to open this up to the public. And ask the public, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak and reference this application? Hearing none, I close the public portion. What's the pleasure to board concerning this application with this new development that has come before us tonight?
Chairman, I move that the application be approved, subject to the idea that our attorney has uh, limiting, uh, transfer in the future so that no children can be occupying these apartments.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve this application with the conditions that were just stated. Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Eszegyga?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Goxton?
Yes.
Miss Kasabi?
You'll receive a resolution. Hopefully, the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members, for all of your consideration and input in this regard. On behalf of my clients, you've made them very happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I just want to mention, Mr. Page, we did have a full board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Didn't have it in three months.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Very good, Counselor. Pulled that one out at the last.
A surprise, Nate.
With our board engineer.
Ah.
That reminded me of, uh, the potential for certain durational variance.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on any issues not relating to pending or present applications? Seeing no member of the public here, I close it. Uh, resolutions, has everyone had the opportunity to look at the resolution in reference Archer Capital LLC River Road?
Yes.
What is the pleasure of the board in reference demoralization of this application?
I move that the resolution be approved as written.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Eszegyga?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Miss Kasabi?
Has everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes of the August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four minutes?
Yes.
It's a pleasure to board concerning those minutes.
I move they be approved.
I second it. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the August twenty-eighth meetings. Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second to adjourn, the meeting's adjourned.